Are we on? Just because Geoff's feeling a bit inspired, he's lost his mate. We've lost his mate today, but it's not his fault. It's his counsel with our... So I'll start with twenty-two, twenty-three, one five nine, which is Cheers with Arts. So a few things remain. Just in case nobody noticed it, Yorkshire Water, the Hammersley Land Museum was the one. So we've obviously had water to fill up some of the water. From our perspective, things that have happened, there was the Revenge of the Day Parade, which I think went very well and was very well attended. There were lots and lots of people coming in there. Thanks as always to Councilor John Good and Co for the litter paper and the clear up of the morning of that, because it makes it all look so much nicer. We've obviously had our November December markets and we've had the Christmas Night Switch on Market, we've got some good support with the Jacob and Train, these Christmas trees, I think Town Square, I mean Briston and Malbridge. I know that, I think we haven't intended an incident to become like someone else this year, but circumstances prevented that, so apologies to them. And then I think the only other thing that's not really on the agenda is the Alpha Chart before real trust, also known as Priestall, annex. There was a meeting about that on the twenty-fifth of November, the Bradford Regulation of Appeals Committee. It's actually downwaking positive steps forward, there's supposed an agreement to how the funds would be distributed. So it's two educational establishments and organisations in the old Bingley Bridge District. There's thirty thousand pounds ringed streets that schools are full in that area. Absolutely, and it's a special relief for the remainder, which is about forty thousand pounds. To use the money, people have to do an annual application process and the applications will be reviewed by a panel that consists of the three Bingley District Ward Councilors, one big rural, one major ward councillor, and there will be one nominated councillor for ourselves to review those things. The actual process is another meeting on the fifteenth of December to try and find on that, but after this long period, it's actually a really positive step forward.
So Geoff, I just mentioned the one thing that we all, where I was concerned about, was that the amount of, I think around two and a half thousand pounds has been deducted from the fund for legal costs. The background being that originally the council were planning to do the setting up of the legal work to set up the charitable trust in-house. Because of shortage of staffing and retirements and so on for the legal department, that it was finally outsourced to commercial solicitors. And though I've raised the matter, the intent on chartering the fund for this, so two and a half thousand pounds or so is being taken away. But I asked the trustees on the regulatory appeals committee, as trustees, if they would write to the relevant council people to say that this wasn't appropriate. And they said they would do so, let us know what the outcome of that representation is.
So hopefully that money will come back and bear the back end of discretion, I think, the whole of that. So I think that's probably it from me. So we move on to twenty-two, twenty-three, one sixty, apologies for absences. Everybody's seen, we've got three. So we are councillor, councillor, councillor Mayor.
Have you seen it all?
Councillor Mayor.
Proposed by councillor Hasselton, second by councillor Williams, fourth by the chancellor. You have a chance to read it though.
We've said this with an apology for Carter. Robert, no apology for Robert?
No.
No. Well, the reason for that would be because councillor Mayor had informed him that it isn't taking, bringing him here, so I would suggest that we ought to put an apology for councillor Carter.
Becca.
You know me, Robert. Is that Becca?
Yes. Oh, thank you.
Because I'd have brought it if I'd have known, but obviously I didn't know.
Okay, so we'll take an apology from councillor Becca, proposed by John. Twenty-two, twenty-three, one six, while all these discussions of interest, we see declarations of interest from councillors for items on the agenda. Do you have any? No? Have you seen any requests for these discussions? We're writing that. Twenty-two, twenty-three, six, to the minutes of the previous meeting. Does anybody have any corrections?
Yes. Two, two, three, one, four, two. It says that the SIDS from Bradford Grammar School to Tesco, they should have been my Grammar School. And then later on in the actions, it also said Bradford Grammar School, which also said Bingley Grammar School.
Any more? No? So you want to first go to the first one? Yeah? First you have the third, second is by councillor Hasselton, I don't think we've tried it.
I'm abstaining, that's all.
I'm abstaining.
Three abstentions, but we won't know. Okay, twenty-two, twenty-three, one six, three, confidential items to discuss, importance at the item one eight one. Does anybody have anything to break it?
I'll check. Your question's all right. I don't have any additions to this one.
You okay there?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Twenty-one, twenty-three, one six, four, public participation. We have got two members of our way, one of our representatives, so do you want to speak?
Sure, yes, yes. So I've been starting a local group called Bingley Music Town. I met John earlier at a friend's London Park gathering, and I'll chat about this. But this is really a local initiative and I was kind of invited to come along to tell you all about it. So it's partly about, it's a community building exercise, it's about getting people interested in music, musicians, people are employing music in districts together, Harley, Ben and I, Bradford twenty-five, we create a group of people that are together, very organised to take part in Bradford twenty-five when that comes along. We're at very early stages of it, so we constituted last month, so about a month old. We've got ourselves eighteen members, I think nineteen, as they've left this evening. And that's all people who like the town, like music, want to see things, kind of carry on and improve. So our aim is to make Bingley a place where music is celebrated and valued as an asset that sustains our health, our building and our economy. And when we talk to people about music in Bingley, there's another thing that's called time and time again, about can we have some more music in the square, can we have some more music in the bandstand, can we have somewhere to rehearse, can we have something that tells us better about what's on and when it's on and where it's on? Well, there was that thing over the day and I missed it, that's a shame, it sounded great. So we hear these kind of things. But we've also got loads happening already. So we've got art school music teachers, we've got various musical things going on in the schools, we've got amazing things going on in the theatre, we've got quite a lot of music going on in the pubs, we've got church bells, we've got the hand bell ringers as well that are there, we've got an operatic society, we've got choirs coming out of our ears, the choirs are all over the place in groups of people singing. So this is really, I guess, just an initiative to start to pull all that together, get people to know each other within those, within those communities and to make a bit of noise out to them. So to say, we've got a small steering group together, meet on the second Wednesday of the month at the minute. I think the plan is that we will kind of try to have steering group meetings, maybe once a quarter, but then wider member meetings, that will be at different times and places across the districts, the idea of Bingley's district, Bingley Town Centre. As a place to get people together to talk, to network and to come up with crazy ideas, hopefully. The way I understand it at the minute is I think we're defining the elephant. We've got the elephant of ideas and we're coming into the small jobs, but at the minute we don't quite know how to operate this. So we're defining the elephant right now and then between us, with the passions that people have and the ideas that people have, we want to try to support them to achieve those things. So again, one of the things that's very interesting, I think, is about, for me in particular, I'm interested in people creating music. So it's not just about consuming music, it's about creating as well. So we've got loads of those groups where people are doing that. I think it's more just going to allow those groups an opportunity to be able to take part and do things, which would be good. So that's us. And I think, coming to you, I'm hoping we can choose a start ground at some point. And that's one of the things that, we've kind of been in Music Town, it's based on the idea of music cities that I was thinking of London. So Austin's a music city in Austin, Texas, and there's music cities in the Netherlands and across Europe, and Liverpool's a music city. They're trying to, they need to recognise it's a core economic driver for their cities. And so they've done an audit of it, they've worked out what they're going to, how they're going to recruit and how they're going to do that. So it's kind of taken that model there and doing it on a smaller, smaller level. There's one in the Music Town, the entire universe as far as I know, and that's Folkestone. So we're hoping the town of Folkestone is the second Music Town. I think that's about it.
It sounds a great initiative and it could be a way to almost bring people into the town who are interested in music and the arts. And I wonder whether, you know, when things develop, they could, you know, could have things, equivalents of, even if it's a small scale, like the Oddly Folk Festival or something like that, where you could have lots of events, you know, themed events in a particular period of time. And as we're linking to twenty-twenty-five, and of course I'd love to see a return of something like the old Bingley Music Live or a successor event actually back in Myrtle Park, which would then be like the icing on the cake of all of the great stuff that's been done underneath in the town. So I think it sounds good.
That's great. We'll dive back to the list, but it's already on the list. So we get lots of suggestions like this, so Blues Festival, Folke Festival, something like the Camden Call that goes throughout the world, Bingley Music Live is a good example of one of the intractable problems that we have. So I think we've got quite a few things where, when you dig into it, for some reason, something in history is preventing it from happening right now and there's things to be worked on for that. So yeah, Bingley Music Live.
But the link to twenty-twenty-five gives you something for your challenge suggestions.
Hi, it's Steve Loos. Certainly, I think Bingley is punching above its weight in terms of music, certainly in terms of the Bingley Weekend, Bingley Music Live, if we can keep that going. I mean, the Pixies is an international band and very good. And I emailed the agent or the organisers on Saturday saying, what's happening? Because I'm looking at Facebook, all over Facebook, is everyone else setting their own music festivals? And yes, there's silence coming out of that group. Chased it with Bradford Bulls, but they just said, well, we're waiting, same as everyone else. So I don't know whether you've got any links into the organisations and say, what is happening and why is it not happening?
No, no, we're not. No, we're just a small group, it's just starting off, so we don't have that kind of influence. Yeah, but I think the point is that we need to come a centre for that, for those kinds of questions we're working on. Do something about that.
You mentioned Folkestone was the only other one. Have they got an online presence that we can see what their terms are and what they hope to achieve and what they do achieve in terms of living for Folkestone?
Yeah, yeah, if you Google Folkestone Music Town, you can find that. If you Google Bingley Music Town, bingleymusic.com, all that kind of exists and has links out to stuff. We've got most of our information through great Google, online public Google document that you can add your address to if you want to yourself. And that's linked to that and that's got links to Folkestone Music Town. BingleyMusicTown.org.
I just think you deserve every encouragement. I think I have a group, we sent out a grant to fly in, Old Woods.
Ah, great.
Starting new. Singing is good for you, I do it in church actually, but singing is good for you, music is good for you, it's good for you, mental health, physical health, or sort of, community is community activity. So I think we, I think the council will decide to support you.
And I think singing in church is a big part of music in Bingley, that was a lot, as well as rock bands in church, and I don't turn, also the patch, it's boring recently, and the flute with Matt as well, so yeah, it's just interesting.
What a tribute.
You could tell the difference, I told you that.
I told you.
That's only for songs.
Okay. I'll go if people don't, yeah. Chris?
About three quick things. I noticed on the minutes of the previous meeting, it says there's two warm spaces places in Bingley. There's at least one over there, it's the Albrook Church, I saw it every Tuesday and Thursday night.
Is it actually on the warm spaces website? Have they registered it there? Do you know? That's where, I was.
I give in.
Because I think now, as we've walked in here tonight, it says they've got one there and obviously there's now one at Church House as well, so there are more warm spaces.
Second thing is, I was hoping to discuss this at the university meeting, a play about it, but it never happened. About the market, on Saturday, if there were seven stalls at the Bingley inspired market, that's it. Well, I've been to the Artisan one, two or three times, I think, and there's been fifteen plus stalls. So why don't we just jack it and let Artisan do it every time?
That may well come on slightly in the agenda.
Right, and the third thing, I don't know who is aware, but there's a planning permission in right now to stick a horrendous 5G mast adjacent to Elrind Roundabout. And I don't know if you've seen these masts, they're horrible, massive, and they come with about half a dozen big blue boxes. And I think it's going to be a right scare on the landscape. So I was wondering if you in the town council would put the tuck and twat thing to object to it.
Well, I'll speak to your planning. Chris, we haven't yet received application as such. We do receive local applications and when they come in, we look at them and we make our comments about the planning. But I must stress, we only can make a comment, we don't have advice, we don't have a vote. But when it comes in, we should look at it.
Well, that's the planning committee, can the council not send a letter of objection?
Well, there's no application actually. I haven't, there's a, I haven't yet, I haven't seen it.
It's on the council website, right up on the council website, right now. And one of the people that's in this room will be able to see the mast straight from their living room window. You'll get good service.
Have we received it, town hall?
I don't think we've received it.
I haven't seen it. No, I don't think so.
We will investigate.
Yeah.
If it's there and it's coming to us as a strategy comes on to.
I think the thing to do is to address our district councillors directly, one of whom is present at the moment, because the advice, the town council has to be consulted by law about planning applications. That doesn't mean to say that they don't notice.
You can object yourself, Chris, you know that, right?
Oh, really?
I have an idea that 5G mast will be passed by the central government and nothing even both are concerned will stop it. I think it's forward, they blew in a blanket, it's a, it's a wrong nut.
I think we've got it right.
I think that was a case for the man in the room about once. But it'd be missed that they're just told, pass this one through.
But as it is, we've seen that.
We haven't seen that yet. No, have you?
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Okay, we will move on. Twenty-two, twenty-three, one six, five, representation of Bradford City Cultures, we've got the shadows, golds are, sorry, I was going to say. To talk to us tonight. The floor is yours.
Thank you. People are saying, we sit here, do we need to get on or, and if anybody, never begin it? Okay. And I will speak up if you can't. And excuse me if when people have questions, if I ask you to repeat, this is very annoying, my hearing aid is kind of struggling a little bit, so, so excuse me if I ask you to repeat questions. So my name is Shana Sosa and I'm the creative director of Bradford UK City of Culture. Reason why I say UK City of Culture, because there's a lot of cultural creative activity happening around West Yorkshire, but there's only one UK City of Culture designation. And making a real point of lifting that above all of the cultural activity that's happening in West Yorkshire over twenty-three, twenty-four and then into twenty-five. Working closely with those areas in order to create opportunity for our cultural sector, for our artists, for our creatives, to grow their practice and grow their experiences and grow their skills, so that we can land in twenty-twenty-five in a way that no other city of culture has yet managed. There's two firsts that we manage with our City of Culture. First of all, it's the first time that DCMS and the government opened it out to larger than the city. Previously, it's been Dairy London Dairy, it's been Hull and it's been Coventry, all city designations. And in January, the government opened it out and said, actually, conurbations, like three or four towns can get together, it can be a whole county, so the lady should say, right, we're going to do the whole county. Like, okay, that's a bit crazy, but go for it, each to their sin to own tune. And that's why Wrexton, which is not a city, it's a large town and now a designated city as a result of what it's big did for the town, now city. But it was the first time that we were able to do that in Bradford, when the Bradford City District. So we have the first designation of its kind. So all five hundred and forty-two thousand plus residents of our district are part of this City of Culture designation. The second first that we have is having leadership that is of the place. It's all of the other cities of culture, the leadership team, whether it's a creative director, whether it's a chief detective officer or the executive director, everybody came into a district. It's the first time that someone is of a place that has won the designation. So it's a real shift and a real change and it's also a real opportunity for us. I don't know if anybody here knows the four themes that we actually absolutely kind of helped us win the designation? No? So this is in the topic remain and they are, first theme is coming of age. We are not one of, we are the youngest city in the UK. So not one of the youngest cities, we are the youngest city in the UK. One in three of us is under twenty. That's a significant, significant kind of identity for us, which also helps us win because we are also, as the judge you had said, the place that is going to drive the future and the future industry, the future hope, the future dream, aspirations of our country. With us being the youngest city in the UK, with us having our first theme is coming of age, we are also coming of age as a city and district. We've not just had underinvestment, we've had disinvestment over the last twenty to twenty-five years. So to kind of finally come to this moment, because I'm sure some of you actually remember when we bid for the European capital of culture and we didn't get it, but now we've kind of come to a point where we're able to kind of work hard. A lot of what you were saying really resonated with me. Came together, worked hard, looked at what was missing, looked at what we needed to do and looked, and the council said, we can absolutely recognise the power and the opportunity that culture gives, a district, an identity and a place. Coming of age is also not about just turning eighteen, it's not just about turning twenty-one, but we continuously come of age. Not at any given time in our lives do we stop coming of age. So we're kind of starting with the young people and thinking, right, creative aging. As we get older, as we kind of get more time or less time, there's that, we call it that stretch, kind of that, what you call the stretched middle, those were in the middle years of our lives, we're kind of either one or the other. But as we get older, what is the opportunity that being of there, having skills, having experience, having knowledge gives us? So really exploring creative aging. Somebody said to me today that she's not, she said, I'm an older woman, but I'm not interested in just going into space that is just for older people. I want to be around young people, I want to be around people of all different ages, I want to be around, you know, with, see what children's imagination comes up with. Because that is what is keeping me young, but that is what is keeping me engaged. So really kind of that challenge to our, to our young people in our district. Our second theme is everything is connected. That kind of looks at our industry, looks at our engineering, looks at our background, it's science, technology, engineering, art and maths. So forget them, it's all about steam. Arts is not just about, you know, drawing pretty pictures or kind of taking great photographs or knowing how to stand up and deliver soliloquy. Arts is also about critical thinking, it's about problem solving. Having imagination and having the skills that these, you know, the skills to kind of think around your problem solving and life skills. And not having art subjects embedded in the curriculum as they used to be means there's generations who are losing that, so actually creating opportunities through science, technology, engineering, art and maths. Also looking at climate change, sustainability, sixty-seven percent is critical of our, of our district is rural. We are also the first rural designation. You've had Hull, which is on water, you've had Dairy London Dairy, Liverpool was a European capital of culture, but the first one to have this level of rural landscape, canvas platform.
So I'm doing, interesting, I'll be doing.
So also, the third theme is City of the World. Our city, our district, our industry, we have welcomed people from all over the world, my parents live in cities. We are an industry that has kind of not just welcomed people from all over the world, but we have also given to the world. So this isn't just about people who have made the city and district their home, this is also about what the city and district has given to the world. So kind of not just kind of thinking internally, but also looking externally. So what is the invitation that we are giving nationally and internationally? The fourth theme and final theme is welcome home sexy. I don't know how many people have seen that bit of graffiti on the Bradford interchange as the train pulls in, which is literally says welcome home sexy. So obviously someone was missing a partner, you know, boyfriend, girlfriend, husband, wife, was like, I'm just going to put this out there. We've taken that and said, actually, this is who we are, we are individual, we are imaginative, we're independent, we are the city that gave you, you know, free school meals, we are the city that's both of the independent Labour Party, we are a two-hundred-and-forty-year-old, fifty-year-old, soon to be, five wives and one. You know, we are industry, we are rural, we are all of it. And so our attitude, our kind of alternative, and if you're not going to give us enough, we are going to find a way of making things happen. That's what we do. We have a DIY culture and a DIY attitude here in the district that actually others can learn from. We have a Bradford way of doing things that other cities and other countries are looking to engage with. Within these four themes, and what these four themes give us, as I've kind of started kind of giving a little bit of a kind of an introduction to, is enough to play with, to bring in what you were talking about, our music heritage, our literacy heritage, our literature heritage. It brings our fantastic alumni artists that now exist all over the world. You know, the kind of what I call the godfather of visual art is a... We, you know, the, the kind of what I call the godfather of visual art is Bradfordian. And he is still utterly to his, to his core, a Bradfordian. He has not lost who he utterly is, he's lived and worked all over the world. It's the same with younger artists who have come out of Bradford, the younger creatives and the younger thinking. The thing that I wanted to kind of finish saying is, and that started by saying, a UK City of Culture designation brings attention, it brings media. I don't know how many of you probably seen since the designation, the positive media that is actually coming out of our Bradford. Although I did read an article on Sunday about the fifteen happiest places in Yorkshire, and we were behind Brimstone. I have feedback about that, but we're behind Brimstone, so I want this kind of work and kind of lift it. And a city of culture designation brings a level of attention that I think we have a responsibility to respond to. We demonstrated a need, we demonstrated an ambition, and we demonstrated imagination. That's why we won. Wrexham, Southampton, Durham, and Bradford were the shortlist at the end. Any one of those designations could have won, each one had a very different offer. So at that point, it was anyone's game. And we won because of what we offered, not just ourselves in the first instance, not just all of us who live here and work here, but also the UK. So my ask is, is it something that we're going to deliver by ourselves? This is something that we're going to deliver with people who are in this room, with people who live here, who work here, who make art here, who enjoy art here, what you were just saying about, you know, bringing music to town. What is actually stopping us right now in kind of doing what we say we need and want to do? We are, at the moment, three of us. Me, Dan, Dan's on day four, I'm on week six, and Ivy, who's similar to me, she's on week six. We're going to grow to a team of about seventy eight people. So please, what I'm saying is also there, with us a little bit at this stage, as we recruit, we have just shortlisted, head of partnership, head of, uh, head of evaluation, head of finance, head of partnerships, uh, exec producer, and we've just put out three more roles. And we've got two new team members starting, so the capacity is growing. So some of the things that are beginning to happen in the district, we are connecting, and we are picking up all of the threads. And hopefully, you will see from January, February onwards, all those threads beginning to be connected. Next year is all about R and D, it's all about opportunity for artists, communities, neighbours, individuals, people, groups, places. Twenty twenty four is about consolidating some of that thinking, some runway projects, runway projects are actually realising some pieces of work. I had a meeting with the Canal and Rivers Trust this afternoon, and I thought, actually, there's a really brilliant, beautiful piece of work that can actually happen, that kind of, you know, they talk about the, the canvas of culture, about our canals and waterways, give us. So there's something really beautiful that can happen in twenty twenty four to demonstrate as a precursor and also as a flavour of what I view is going to be like. And we are looking at how the connectivity is happening. Every weekend, what is the offer that is coming out of Bradford? If anyone is coming into the city and district in twenty twenty five, on any given weekend, there will be events with twenty twenty five and with the wider community. I think that's it for now. If anybody's ever got any questions, probably you're sat all over them.
I'll start with, I suppose, the general big question for us, which is, how do we get involved? How do we make sure some things come to being made? How can we help you deliver it and make it as successful as possible?
So the two, two pieces of it, A, kind of keep speaking to us in, inviting us and, and kind of allowing us to be part of these spaces that you are in. Also, please come to us, we are going to hold some open forum sessions and meetings like with people, we come and as a, as a district where we speak to each other and see how can we link and work with each other. We are looking at bringing in, um, neighbourhood ambassador type roles, people who are embedded in communities, embedded in towns. We are actually looking at the thirty walls, you know, areas across the district, thinking about how we can embed artists. So introducing those people to our community, they're going to be of our communities, but there'll also be new talent, fresh talent that will be coming in as well. We need that, we need to grow who we have and support who we have to grow, but we also need to invite new and fresh in. So I'm asking, if there's a new person who comes into our district, befriend them. Show them who we are, show them, invite them into our homes, invite them into our places. Say this is what we are trying to do, and this is how we're trying to do it.
Uh, we have a, we have a theatre dear, bring me, uh, that has two youth productions here, it has quite a busy programme apart from that. And how, how, I went to one, such a nice studio production actually, which had at least half of it was young people, but they have some, some productions that are completely, as well as the inevitable Gilbert and Salm, which I love. Uh, and how does that connect?
Well, that will be what our artists will embed in the communities and we have things to do. So, um, this is across art form, here of culture, but across art form, it's visual art, it's photography, it's digital, performance, it's music, it's outdoors, it's site specific. These communities and these groups that exist, we will be speaking to them. We will have our neighbourhood ambassadors, our artists who are embedded in the community, speaking to them, working with them, seeing what the opportunity is to not just look at what they're doing, but giving them an opportunity to do something. Yeah.
And a couple of other things, if, if my mind, one is, um, same role, and I believe one direction, not my other song by it, is Tom High School.
Then what it is.
Uh, the other one is that Bradford has been awarded a prize for physics in nineteen thirty, so I think we knew that. And first for Michael Appleton, who went to Barkham Primary School and rode a B B three.
Did not know that. Thank you for that piece of information.
And Fred Ward. Fred Ward as well, yes, that's being with. I have something there as well. If you want to know what he did, obviously, he worked out the radio waves, but, but the high frequency, which is really for radio transmissions. And shortly after his work, uh, who, who, who?
What was his name?
Michael Appleton.
Appleton.
Appleton, Adol Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, so same issue here.
I have something, so the other thing with this, from my perspective, is that, um, my understanding is that Bradford twenty twenty five fits into Bradford council's wider cultures are planned, which is through the final years after the city culture. And that's what I put my mind on, the bring the music towers, that we, we can build something to twenty twenty five that will then sustain through after that. So it brings all those people together. It, it's just a really clear op, opportunity for me to get this game going out and then to build.
We, we call it the rocket fuel. So a ten year strategy, culture is a thriving cultural sector creates a thriving economy in many, many different ways. It kind of brings jobs, it kind of brings opportunity, tourism, placemaking. One of the things that I was, I was talking, uh, speaking earlier about, and because I went to Beldon Walker's group last week on Wednesday evening, and every single walking group in the district was there. That was fantastic to kind of have them all there. I was expecting about twenty five people, there was about a hundred plus there, so that was fantastic. And in the email, in the invitation to come and speak to them, there was a phrase, Bradford on Foot. And that in itself, even that phrase immediately has kind of given opportunity to have an artist presence, work with those groups, look at urban walking, look at rural walking. You know, one of the, one of the walkers there said, well, people don't, people know that Hocky's in top pair, but they don't know that there's a Hocky Abbey in Cartwright Hall. They don't know what his, you know, areas of interest were, where he, what drawings he'd done. There's an urban walk that we can do there. I met with, um, the boys who look after the River End Trust, Air Valley Rivers Trust. And they're trying to map walks along the river through some heavy industrial areas where actually the natural design line, the natural walk has overgrown. And they're trying to remap it, reopen it, because those urban walks take you into the landscape. So actually, a whole piece of work that is around Bradford on Foot. It's, even a phrase like that, something like that creates an opportunity.
Um, just to say thank you for what, what you're saying. Um, I think what comes across to me is the importance of, um, it's a district wide event, and hopefully with district wide legacy long into the future. Um, that it's very much seen, and I think what you're saying confirmed it, it's very much a sort of bottom up thing, where people in the district are coming and, and presenting their artistic and cultural, um, assets in a way which hopefully can be, um, so coordinated perhaps at Bradford wide level. But it's obviously not realistic to expect you and your smallest team to know everything. So I think going around the different districts, speaking of the town and parish councils and other community groups is, is the way to make that happen.
Well, when, when you mentioned this ten year cultural strategy, uh, twenty twenty five is in the middle of those ten years. It's one year, it is one year that is, brings attention, leverage, um, opportunity. And when I say we have a responsibility to respond to that opportunity, it's exactly that. For years, we've gone, and people have a particular story to tell about Bradford. People that kind of, kind of look at Bradford and say, you know, what, what does that district have to offer, what does that city have to offer? Now, it's since the thirty first of May, you can actually see the interest, the desire to engage with and be a part of, not just in these three years, but the next ten years. My ask of our cultural sector is, you know, our cultural sector is made up of individuals, freelancers, individual artists. And it's made of, of small companies, of one or two or three people, not more than that. We don't have a middle section, we then have the big kind of institutions. So it's kind of trying to grow our artists so that we begin to kind of look at that middle section. We've got a fantastic history of creativity, culture, you know, social, social engaged practice. It used to be called community art until those kids grew up and did PhDs, and it became social engaged practice. We have a huge history of it. So it's our past, that past determines our present, but it also gives us opportunity in our future. So we have a ten, ten year focus, not just a one year focus. We're in year two now. So twenty twenty five should actually push us through into the next five years. And legacy should be felt across the district.
Sorry. A, a bit of a negative note, but you mentioned heritage and fantastic property now. Uh, too many of our buildings in Bradford have been ripped apart at, at high level by trees, bushes, plants growing in gutters and through the building seams now. Is there anything your team can do to get landlords to get some high, high gaps and all, high up or whatever, take the bunnies off the thing? I'm, I'm thinking of the scrap metal place down on C L Road. Um, you know, the, the whole building, the whole facade there has just been tore apart with roof level. And certainly some of the bigger old buildings, and indeed, the Oden was before it became the O two. You know, there's many, many examples of old buildings being ripped apart by foliage.
I think, I think there's, um, I think there's, uh, there's a talking heads on that where if, if you leave it alone enough, nature intrudes, and nature comes back.
Enter.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, what we can do is bring attention to it.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're, we have a, a unique selling point for Bradford, that we have a, a lot of sites where we can bring and create opportunity in art. And some of those are those sites, because they, we can project from them, we can create art in them, and we can bring attention to them. And when, and this tends to happen, we call it demonstration, but actually, when artists come in and start demonstrating the opportunity, others follow. And a lot of those buildings are actually private landlord owned, all we can do is demonstrate this is a possible opportunity, and then hopefully, that responsibility is, which lands with them, they will pick up on it.
Well, we, we talked about, I don't know, the plan, um, um, having the ability to walk the high street, and then indicate to ourselves and agree what we want and our high street to improve, and then write to firemen and all, to say, we as a team have spotted, you know, that broken window in that building, if you can fix it. And, you know, just implore, but you're right, we've got no legislation levers to pull, but by highlighting that to say, actually, your building's left in the team now. And for, for twenty twenty five, you've got two years, give it on it, get on it.
We can try it.
You would, please? Sorry, it was Edward Appleton, not Michael Appleton, Michael Appleton, he's a footballer from Mighty T.
What was his name?
Edward Appleton.
Yeah, we're the fun footballers.
Michael Appleton. Field press. How is the city of culture financed?
It's made up of lots of different funding. Uh, we are creating a business case for DCMS, first business case of the actually biggest sale. So asking for DCMS and some funds, the council, Art Council, National, National Lottery Heritage Fund, um, other kind of businesses, sponsors, it's made up of lots of different types of money. But it doesn't, we have to apply for it.
Um, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, okay. I just wondered how you're going to get a team of seventy people, you know, to.
Yeah, we've found the best, we've been there in the last six weeks, actually, you know, to get back on your horse.
So you, you've been, you've been, you've been in for money to set your team up, that's.
So the money, the program, the, the, it's everything.
Isn't there a, a fund from, from the camp, from the government?
From the government, it's a business case that we are putting to them.
Oh, you've got a couple of business places, or they're just sort of like, they've been giving you X and Y.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
I have to run, I have a bit there, who's always waiting about fifty minutes. Winter hits and pipe sleep, don't they? It's when also your voice decided not going to work again. But thank you so much, thank you for having me.
We're doing something for the perfect time, just having to invite someone to your.
I think, I think, I think it's good for, um, the, the wider team to be part, to be part of meetings, because that's how you become part of district as well. Well, thank you.
I think, I'm afraid, just, just give proof, just my old friend, who's. Okay, we're moving on to twenty two, twenty three, four, one, six, ongoing items. You see, you've got places following on, then it's using the big other action plans, there's a, a feeling pool. I don't know if anybody's got, obviously, we've got council funds. Right, we've got, we've got updates on big pools, be the changing places toilet facilities.
Uh, the latest was in a email from Rob James, who's the project manager for Astor Banham and Two O's on yesterday, saying that there's still some outstanding works that healthmatic need to be done before it can be signed off by Bradford council uh, for booting control, uh, which they will be coming to do this week.
Yeah, they're coming tomorrow, I've sent you all in there.
There's a more, they're coming tomorrow.
They're coming tomorrow.
The little things that they need to do, things like fire stopping between the two buildings where they're taking the services for. So they're, they're moving now, there's something major to do, we just need to do them and then tell, um, Bradford that they've done them and get the sign up. Then we can apply to Muscular Distrophy UK, who are the body behind the thirty million from Bradford, sorry, from the government. And they've got the whip hand in deciding whether our site goes live on their website. And apparently, we cannot use it or make use of it or advertise it until it does go on changingplaces.uk dot org website.
It's just registering, it's not.
So it, it's, it's kind of red tape, um, but Astor Banham are leading on that, uh, uh, thrust, that application. And we'll get to know about it as soon as it's done, so imminent. We'll get to know about it as soon as it's done, so imminent.
I am hoping we can open it before Christmas.
It'd be nice. It'd be nice. We've got 13 days, 20 days or so. It'd be nice, but.
Have we received the finance funding? That was.
No, I don't think we have received the funding yet.
No, we've sent it forward, haven't we?
No.
With the contract, we won't get the funding until we've sent the final report. It will be the only one for.
Right, so it's all, it's all carton parcel, the final sign off on muscular dystrophy saying you have an approved. Because the funding was to get an approved CP toilet.
Yeah, yeah.
So carton ball's kind of.
So we need everything in place and so we're not just going to.
Should be.
A, we've got to do some facility. B, we're all going to be maintaining it and working on it.
And then you have to release the funds.
And we should get it this fiscal year though. You know, a Philippi saying we should get the sign up before Christmas is hope. But we certainly, the funding should come because we're already chasing that.
But the funding won't come almost by the month of November. But it's slightly frustrating that this meeting was taking longer than we would have expected. Okay, any other questions from changing places? See, the kind of emergency.
Now, this is, this is a proposal from me, which was kind of agreed by the councillor chair. And I understand that we've had no response from Yorkshire Water. This is one of four possible responses. You get either it's a fair cop gov, I'm coming. Or you get burble, burble, burble. That's the Nestlow response. Or you get silence. The fourth one actually doesn't fly in this country. We're going to kill you. At the moment, you know. And so on silent, I think we ought to write them again.
How long are we given in the.
The month before last, isn't that the.
But absolutely should not go.
It's in the too difficult part.
I would second the chase.
There are proposals that we write again.
Yes, so perhaps by dial, secondly, firstly, all the firemen, the rip and run, chasing up Yorkshire.
Thank you, Michael, that's what I'm getting.
Okay, then moving on to D, speaking of the changes of the prices.
Must be me then, as I show you. We have been asked to provide land post numbers where we think they should go. My view was Bradford council should tell us where they have the data and know what the land post will do. They should be saying, these are selections, so we need to go out and picture random land post numbers.
Well, I think they really should respond to us. We've given them too much later. We actually think we wanted them around the north, but which side of the road was the worst?
They have the data and most likely give us the best opportunity. We might say there, but the council has problems being a load of accidents. They have the data. So we'll go get some random numbers and.
Can I make a suggestion, and if it hasn't already been picked up, we should consider it. And that's coming down the hill from Park Road down to that new roundabout at the corner of Lady Lane. Because last, the month before last, we were considered a concern and the change in direction that new roundabout would entail. And from my point of view, I'm just going to drive out of Lady Lane because I've got right away now for that roundabouts there. And people coming down from Motley Road will find that they're steaming down at 30 miles an hour in front of them. So an indicator device might be good.
It is, Jerry, so Steve looks at the minutes of last meeting between Holbank Drive and Lady.
I'm talking about north of Lady.
Oh, sorry.
To slow the traffic down before they hit my car.
Well, it's all right.
He said between Lady Lane going up the hill. Oh, there is. Okay, there is. Just before that tight bend. Yeah, just before the tight bend, these two are right. But I'm talking about down by Lady Lane because there's going to be a roundabout there.
You need to drive before you get there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because they can speed up at 60 from that corner down to Lady Lane.
We don't know when that roundabout's going to be there.
And if it's fashionable, I think about it should be a part of that construction by Bradford, I'd have to be more sincere.
It'll be, I'm sure, hasn't it?
Can I make a suggestion that whoever has suggested the potential areas should get their finger up and go and pick a land post that they do or a number of, as I have done in Cottonleigh, and then give something to work to. Because we've suggested to Bradford council, they do it. They say, no, we have to do it that way. So let's, if you're going to move this thing forward, let the people in Cross Flats or Elwick or wherever these suggestions, wherever these suggestions are, they've been put to the council, have to be the town council. So could those people please give us some suggestions of land posts?
Well, it begs a further question, given that on the item on the agenda, we have this about the speedworks that they're doing through our reduction of speed limit in Bingley area. Is there a need to put the SIDS in place?
Well, certainly is in Cottonleigh.
No, no, but I'm saying.
Well, this is just, this is just for down MacMoston, isn't it?
Yeah, but there's a lot of other areas that they're actually dropping down 20 mile an hour.
The only place that is in Bingley for 20 mile an hour is, I think, what we'll come on as a. But I agree, we need to move the SIDS forwards. If we don't have nominations, we should review what nominations to land posts have drawn. So then go to ground, the comment.
I should say, Chair, I will pass it on. A resident only spoke to me last week in Gilstead and he asked about the possibility of a SIDS at least at some point being on Gilstead Lane.
Yeah, yeah.
There is, I said I would raise the matter.
But again, Gilstead Lane, where.
Well, that's it, I said.
It's all good, yeah.
I would have pulled that idea originally. There's one at the corner, just as you're going to come up the hill. But then I was coming up the hill to the last meeting and I was overtaken by two cars while I was going up there. So there is a possible need up there.
Chair, can I suggest that we appoint councillor Gurdon and councillor Williams to actually put forward this for, put this forward for us?
Can I say, I tell you, it is our staff.
It was our staff and David that sponsored it.
Yeah, that's fine. We've got two names to press that action.
We've got, we've got two names, but not so worrying.
I'll provide a lot of land post numbers.
That's it, yeah.
We were asking the highways experts to use their highly paid expertise to advise us which are the best sites. They should just have some random, non-expert sites.
Well, that's, that's fine, asking the experts, asking Bradford. Well, somebody needs to lead it to a talk to them. That's a problem. We're not talking to Bradford.
We've sent them a message after the last meeting.
We shouldn't have meeting with them. That's the best.
Probably is better to us to think, what is the thing we want for someone to contact?
You can't be going meeting people, actually, you know, just sending letters just to people. Talking, talking to them, you get better answers.
Absolutely.
And you get to know other problems. David says they have the information. That's what you need to work on. We're just going to send another letter, it's wasting the plaque's time in some respects.
We wouldn't try to stop it.
So we're on 22, 23, 167, 59. You see the schedule for the 5th of December? Has anybody got any comments?
You have to play a short section.
Actually, I've got one. One, $20, thank you, thanks, sure. Sorry, I'm 30th of December. You're jumping ahead in time.
It's that time machine, to be honest.
So with that direction, I'll propose. So if I guess I'm not all the way concerning the plans.
You meant, sorry, Chair, did you mention line 19? 4th of December 2021. Should that be 2022 as well?
Oh, no, that's the other 10 that was missed on.
Oh, yes, yes.
Last year, so they're, they're working before.
They've just sent the invoices, two invoices from last year.
Yeah, sorry for dropping you.
I'm not that bad in that.
I think the music should play for workers, isn't it? Okay, so then B, to agree the bank account simulations for London for the only points or queries on that. Propose. So if I cancel, second, cancel trial or whatever. 22, 31, and emergency sports, I'm committing.
Thank you. We had a subsequent non-meeting with Mick Burrow because we couldn't attend our first proper meeting, so briefing meeting. Many of the questions that we had raised, I would answer. And the team in the office have worked frantically to get something ready for us on the 19th of December when the committee will be meeting again. So it is an evening meeting, so more of the members on it can actually attend. But we were bound unfortunately by a mixed time where we had to make, so good afternoon. We should be evening meetings, we should have something to consider. 19th?
Can I ask councillor Easottine if you got my message about the cupboard? The fire station.
In the fire station, yeah, we're trying to track down the key for it.
Yeah, well, I provided an update to you, but I just want to make sure that you've got the message. We left the cupboard there because they broke the lock. Took the contents out of it and put it on our cupboards. So they or you or councillor Gurdon, free to dispose of that cupboard in any shape or form. Oh, we can have it. It's bogus.
We'll follow that with the fire service.
Oh, we left it in the fire station.
No, I said, wait, you said we could move it. I said, wait. I thought you said, oh, we can.
Carry the tip. But it might be, it might be an asset, Tom, like, said cupboard. I don't know.
That's what I'm saying. Where are you going to put it?
Well, I kept looking, it wasn't broken, so.
Steve might be on an asset register on the.
Not for me, but I said, yes, we tip her.
So they're like, emergency stock, they're always talking about.
Did you begin it for Steve to fit it? Sounds good. You didn't hear that, did you, Steve?
No, no. I didn't hear that.
22, 23, 169, events marketing and communications committee, not today. I think as our members of the public are looking to earlier, the events marketing, the communication committee seems to be struggling to meet at all. The last two meetings have been cancelled. I think one more was postponed by a week. Don't sure if people could. I'm aware that the four councils on it were done. One, I'm probably, two, definitely got lots of things happening that personally are in huge inability to attend meetings. I am beginning to think that having resurrected this committee, we probably just want to give its responsibilities back to F and G. Because it's struggling to do it back then.
The problem I have with it is that I think I was an agent provocateur to get the email back on its feet again. Because I wanted to be driven into what comes the council want to talk about at markets. And I didn't want to be stood at a market stall, or indeed any other event, without an agenda, without a playbook, as it were, just waiting to, on the off chance that someone might want to speak to me. So the idea behind the email was a good one, but if we're failing to get it up and get it going, it does make the question, will we have a message to give out to the people?
Well, I think we should have a message.
I would too.
And I think we should, and I think we should emphasize what we're doing better. But unfortunately, at the moment, it's struggling. So I think we'll continue for now, but come my next year, council and the committee, whether it's still in place. And it does make us a little bit exposed because I know I've spoken to Roz, who's the chair of that committee. And one of my discussions with her was very much online. But Chris said earlier, it was having a committee meeting and then having a paper that would come to this group to suggest that we don't stop our farmers' market because at the moment, we are struggling to get stalls. The art design market that's there on the other Saturdays is doing a lot better. The only possible issue there, I think, is I believe that's just a pilot. And we're not entirely sure how in that pilot runs for. But the fact that it's there and it's delivering a lot of stalls and it's generating some footfall actually means to me that our farmers' market has almost served its purpose in keeping the market alive. So a better offer has come along. And I know we are currently, we've been asked by Bradford whether we want to take the lease. For next year, we do need to make a decision very quickly. So I don't know for this group if we want to agree that we don't continue.
Chair, I think that it's important, obviously, Chris wandered through the markets the other day when I was there. Really, it's been about three or four consecutive markets where the number of stalls have been extremely low. A number of the regular stalls seem to have stopped coming. It's quite awkward in ways. We sometimes do some good marketing through the social media accounts. But some of the stores who are advertised to be there don't actually turn up. We consistently have good musical performances. We actually enjoy choir. I was there on Saturday, which certainly made my morning because there wasn't much else to do there. But really, since the other market is happening on a weekly basis, albeit they have plenty of stalls, quite a lot they have football which needed, I think, they will obviously have to evaluate. But it seems to me that, you know, with regret, nothing much seems to be going to happen with our farmers' market at the moment. I see no prospect anytime soon of suddenly lots of stalls coming and it working. And I think, I presume we're contracted with the Otley Partnership for this financial year. But I think a serious discussion, I don't know when we make that decision, would have to be made. Because I can't see it's going to be viable and it's currently for next year.
Well, I've supported this market. I've been to all the committees. I've done, pulled my tracks out with my wife, I'd say, loving stuff there. Nine times out of 10, it's me and Geoff. Occasionally, we do get a bit of help. Very, more Owen comes and helps as a member of the public. I'm prepared to keep doing that until April. I'm not prepared to do it on a regular basis after that. I think councillor's been asked to come and represent, being a small gazebo, few and far between. So I'd support, I was talking to Geoff on Saturday, I'd support if they're willing. So I'd support, I was talking to Jeff on Saturday, I'd support if they're willing to make it every week. For this partnership, this other group, because I think it's. We keep getting told that there's a need for the market, that Bingley people need the market, if we don't supply a market, we're going to, you know, bill down upon them. But it's just impractical. We're just, we're just not getting anywhere. So that's, that's my view.
Going backwards effectively.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It would work better almost if it was less frequent, if it was like a bit of a special event, you know, every couple of months. Something like that might be worth considering, but just every week, it doesn't work, it's not going to start getting any better, unfortunately.
I didn't see the market on Saturday, but I did see the market on Friday where there's, you know, about three stalls there. The fruit and veg man had a very impressive frontage, he got triple, triple tent, if you like, triple gazebo. You know, very good spread of thing, what he was lacking was customers. You know, and he just drove past at twenty miles an hour, but, you know, it was again. Visible by lack of customers.
I think the Friday's. The stores there seem to get some regular customers, but it's not massive.
I guess he must be making money, I was thinking what you're talking about.
But from our perspective, I think our Saturday market. Is a, is a poor cousin to the current other Saturday market.
I suppose all consideration that we do have to make, the Blackford council inspired event, that's on, and then it misses a week. Ultimately, that regularity of those store homes coming out, miss a week. You might get drop off in there, because nobody expected you next week. I think maybe we do need to have a conversation with Bradford. How is this experiment going on before it's not an experiment and you are going to continue? And also, would it be an advantage if that, this market can do it every week? I think we need to have that conversation.
Yeah, without a doubt, we need to push it, push it ahead one way or the other, though. Well, I mean, I think Offering Partnership, I look at it, drift away anyway, I think they're fine. Peter's sold a lot of his equipment off, so he's got to bring that with his stores and anything like that, I think he's looking to wind down, so maybe now is the time to let him drift.
Not sure about it, seriously.
And if we can push ahead with the one that Bradford's offering. I mean, it's in keen to push ahead every time you see something on the media. Bradford's, you know, chirping about it, you know, whether that continues or if it's just a glit, I don't know, but. It's worth putting ahead another advertiser for the market, it can draft itself out for the new one. So I'm also trying to get some momentum going for markets as a whole. Who's going to talk to them? And that's the thing. I'm quite happy chatting with you, but with Bradford.
I think we'd need to contact them about the contract, we won't officially they need from both Bradford and Offering Partnership.
Need to talk to them, no? It's as simple as that, we didn't get a meeting, we bought parties and see what's going on.
And I, and I, councillor Dawson had that conversations around what, what they are actually agreeing for lots, so that's what I, I'm saying, we'll go, we'll go back, we'll go back on that route. In principle, we think if we can move away and have our own market, then we should.
Can we just say thank you to Jeff, and particularly John, all the labour that they've put into it?
It's John.
It's John.
John's had a strong voice this stuff.
So great thanks to John from Offering Partnership.
As I said, I keep doing it, they'll keep letting me.
That's for the children, that's true.
Is there anything else anyone wants to talk about around events marketing on the council? Not going to go on. Twenty two, twenty three, one seventy, finance and general purposes committee. You've got, you've got the minutes. The parlance. The law, we agreed the clip lot twenty three, and that's been done, we agreed we'd split pots twelve to eight and five on big line. And two more separate streets when it becomes available. I agree that we should provide four new grid beds in the locations that are there, the four four years to be the road big line market. What we're going to pretend. Three new ones, or one we're adopting.
No, no, three altogether, isn't it? I thought we'd turned one down. We did, we turned one down, we had four, we had four proposals and we turned first one down.
All right.
Hell, we did. The one down Sherif Lane, that in that colour.
Yeah, Sherif Lane.
Sherif Lane.
Yeah, we rejected that. And we got Pit Lane, South Hill and that one. Just on that, just on that, I did, I did do as it were, we were asked in the F and G P and I did go and do some research on the one of Pit Lane. I was told by residents that nobody knew wanted, and I suggested that we adopted it and I've actually stuck a sticker on it and I think it's been ordered, so that's. Because I thought, I think the status of the hill, I think, is a bit ideal and it's.
That's what councillor actually did confirm, it was a private move.
Right, yeah, okay.
We can't find that, no one, no one's, no one's. So I think then the other way to bend for last F and G P was we could give a grant to the Cheltenham train for the extra light switch on. Which was quite expensive. Quite significant grant. And I think from F and G P, there was a feeling that we almost were just handing over money, we need to be more involved in the organisation, but I'm sure that someone wants that.
You need an, you need an events and marketing committee.
Unfortunately.
Did the chamber submit all the justification for it, or, you know, the bills that, if we paid our part, did we just commit it on?
They provided us with what we asked for as part of the application.
Right. Yeah, so we got justification for it, haven't we?
Yeah. But the other thing, you know, the, I was, I was quite disappointed as well that the inflatable Santos Grotto. Seems to me, I thought, which we were having instead of under the bottom grass, it was very small.
Was it?
It was very expensive.
It was very expensive, very small.
I'm making, I just, two words, quick word, because at the moment. It says including sil funding, I did ask Eve if she'd put this on the agenda because. I thought I would have some, some positive news on that. Seems to be sort of a feeling within the council that this money's never going to get spent, trust me, if the two projects that I'm trying to work on come fruition, you will have a lot of money left. So at the moment, that includes the bank standard, so I've had a positive price. It's sort of been okayed by Bradford Council, I found out through. In another conversation that the initial contractor who gave us the first quote was actually having a meeting with a chap called Dave Wells this Thursday. Last Friday, on the recommendation of Bradford Council, of their panel, I also got two more contractors to come and look at the job. They said they'd give us a quote down here, but I'm hoping that I'll get some positive news for the F and G P. The other project, which were the refurbishing the red bedding cot in it. I've had five builders and I've had one quote today and I'm just waiting for the other ones, I hope for it. This is just because I wanted to say this, been put on this, this agenda for the self and myself, okay? So I'm not, I'm not positive, but I am positive.
Just for your one bit, that's, that's giving power to the band.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Couple of things about still actually, one is, do we have an education that it will be increased back, although it's steadily gone down, hasn't it? Do we know what it will be next year?
We haven't been told what it's going to be, we haven't had it from this twenty two, twenty three week, we don't know what it is yet.
Second one is, actually, my understanding is, as I mentioned, as we know, that Bradford Council has no authority whatsoever. About in how Bingley Town Council spends sil money, but maybe our town clerk will be able to confirm that to me. But that was the advice from the two of you, from a former local government officer.
I think they have, they have, we have to spend it on infrastructure, which is not a Bradford thing, it's a, it's a broader legal thing. We don't have to spend it when Bradford would tell us, like us to spend it, we can spend it on the things that we think.
Correct, but it does not have to be authorised.
No, it's allowed, we've got it.
But we don't know from year to year how much we're going to get, because it depends on how much building in, in, in our ward. And then it depends on the size of that, because if, if a development goes beyond a certain size, like the branch and stuff at the magistrate's court. Then it, then Bradford can put in a section one oh six agreement instead of sil, so it becomes a different, so for the year to year, we've, we don't know what's going to come through.
And the same between the ninety six houses that have been, is it ninety six that have been built on site for former flats? Will that be sil money?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Crossley Wood.
Crossley Wood.
Oh, Crossley Wood.
Always, I don't know if that's social action.
I think communities, but doesn't know that. On the wider point, on the, for councillor Barton's benefit, there's a government website which tells us what we can spend sil on, not a Bradford website. It's repeated on the Bradford website, but it's effectively a government website. And some councils work closely with their district councils, some parish councils work closely with their district councils. So that there is a, a joint approach to development and infrastructure, they go cheek and gel together, but there is no government side to do.
Some district councils work well with their parish councils as well, but it's true as well.
Well, something that's later on the agenda, I know from an incident of conversation I had, that Simon Devale, the Bradford highways officer, said that there are some other. Town, town or parish councils that are contributing some of their sil money's back to putting in twenty one hours.
It would, sir, wouldn't it?
It would. I just, I just state that.
Pass on that one.
So any, any questions on F and G P? We move on to twenty two, twenty three, they've got a farming group?
Yeah. We're, we're meeting and we are in the throes of doing an informal consultation. What, formal consultation, but one specifically to do with the green spaces and the buildings. And other structures, where we're writing to landowners, property owners about the inclusion of their properties in, in the neighbourhood plan. We're getting some feedback and the feedback we initially got proved that our letter could have been improved. So that letter has been approved and another letter has gone out, as we've extended the consultation period to the end of the year, I think, December thirty first now, isn't it?
Second of January.
Second of January, it won't be back, so we've given them, they've given the people involved another couple of weeks to comment back. We will then take those comments on board and get them sit around the table again and discuss. Also, we are talking to the design consultants who under tender, it's all big designs, about taking the wordy plan and putting it into a PDF style plan. Because that will be the look for week fourteen, which is going to be now sometime, but obviously it's going to be in the new year. Hopefully before the year end, the fiscal year end, but so we're in a position now where we just don't know. We were at the behest of others, I think, as the, as the view. And an admission of guilt, I seem to have dropped, dropped the ball with regard to ACON because. Framed in my email has been overinterpreted. If you recall, the waterworks in Gilstead was withdrawn from sale. Well, I asked ACON to remove the gateway, and what they've done is they've removed all four pages. Which, because I was otherwise engaged on holiday, it wasn't spotted. Or if it was, if it was spotted, the email that I asked for it to be done was also interpreted the wrong way. So I have an urgent phone call tomorrow with ACON to try and restore the missing four pages. Because at the moment, what we have is a master plan for Bingley and a master plan for gateway for Cross Flats. So it looks like the only other village in Bingley, Bingley Parish is Cross Flats. So it ignores Edward McGilsey, which we're taking as one in this four pages. Costley was considered and not taken forward because there was no development opportunity for Costley because it's pretty much one mile now anyway. So I'm hopeful that the four pages can be added back with subtle words added or taken away to say that. The gateway to Gilstead would only go forward in the way that is written, should the waterworks come forward. And that's what I had expected when I opened the PDF, looked at it, was horrified, I said, that all of the text and all the drawings and all the photographs are gone. So I had a conversation with Lee and he pointed at my email, I went, oops. So if it's gone, it's my fault, if it, if it gets put back, it's my fault. So it's my fault. So that's where we are on the major plan, it, it seems to be long and drawn out and indeed it is. I would encourage your councillors to come to neighbourhood plan working groups to join the torture.
Any questions just sort of? Okay, twenty two, twenty three, one seventy, one, twenty three, we're done.
Yes, it's, there's nothing to report, we haven't, we've done a very few applications. All the information is there, we, what is it, et cetera.
At Chris's, through the chat, at Chris's prompt in, I looked at the portal for planning for the aerial and it was.
Is it home?
It was validated on the twenty eighth of the eleventh, which is. Yes, and it's seven days ago, so it will be coming to your way soon.
We should have had it back, that's strange, well, anyway, well.
It's emailed. Coming your way soon.
Thank you.
Yeah, so what pieces?
Twenty eight, forty nine, it's validated by twenty nine. Yeah, it's sorry, the aerial. The aerial is definitely referred to.
All right.
On the call, I'm David.
Yeah, pull out when you see it, come here.
There are a couple of things on planning, one was that gateways, which is six quarters up from my house. Planning committee recommended refusal, that's actually been approved.
It's been granted, yes.
And the other, the other one was that painting of the exterior wall on the three rise. That was done as a replace to stop graffiti going up there, we've still got loads of graffiti. Despite best effort, it been kicked.
Well, they rejected, can I just inject, they rejected it anyway.
It's got to be whitewashed, has it?
The other one, they've just said they're not very right, we've suggested any time soon. We suggested, I'm right in saying. Let's imagine.
You suggested, you suggested that it should be, should be rejected on the grounds that it should have been applied for in the first place.
Yes, thank you.
So give it a limited life.
Yes, we give it a limited life, yeah.
Well, Bingley Town Council's to recommend that it be put up on the grounds of urban dominance over bearing of the proposed properties on one another. Design ops has formed a local meeting, there were said to be significant lots of trees and no tree protection during building. The trees that may cause total drainage issues due to the loss of trees and guards are replaced by house serpents. And that's the first one we've seen graffiti on.
Not in there. Not in there? Something about a wall.
That's the meeting as well.
But, but I think half the side we're going to discuss at the next planning committee meeting, because if you, if you read the case officer's decision report, it's, it says things like the town council objected to this and the case officer didn't like this. So we've gone away and negotiated changes, none of which have come towards and then never brought it. So the process obviously sent a big one.
We should, we should mention it, but there's no, as I was saying, there's nothing we can do. We've, we've said what we wanted, we've rejected it, they've granted it. So it's going to happen anyway. Yeah.
Which we're not new on now, are we, talking about the gateways?
Gateways.
Gateway, okay.
Gateways.
It'll happen.
Yeah, one summer, and it may change, yeah, which will surprise it. And the second is, it was the bureau. On the, we were given emails. This goes for us now.
Yes.
We can add it to the lifespan until it should be removed.
Yeah, we did, yes, we gave it to the lifespan, saying that it should be removed. Um, most I can tell you on that, after, yeah.
What do you want to know? Has it been approved?
It's approved, I don't know.
I'm not sure.
Call Michael up.
Michael up?
Sorry.
How great, has that one been?
Good tour, is that?
The mural by the five, right?
Three rise works.
Uh.
The river sheet, oh, oh, that's lovely. We're going to meet next year, the, yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, one one, twenty two, twenty three, one seven three, community events, considering any other events? We've got any, well, I don't necessarily, unless anybody knows of anything coming up that we ought to start considering. Oh, one one, twenty two, twenty three, one seven four, green code.
Just to say that the winter bedding's all gone out, uh, with, can we install the relevant groups for the summer bedding and think today that order's being put into Bradford Council, is that correct?
It is.
Um, we're also, FNGP, um, I think the last council meeting, the Green and Clean Forum, we're working on that, we've got a date, uh, of the twenty eighth of January, uh, just to finalise the arrangements and then publicise it and hopefully we have a good attendance on the day in January. Uh, I think that's all for now. Oh, wait a bit this weekend, uh, forgot about that. Um, by the cemetery gates, if anybody's, we're going, yeah, that's being publicised and, uh, of course, we, we, um, Debbie will be, um, reminding people this Wednesday, we mentioned, okay? Okay.
Any questions on the green plan? No, okay. Twenty two, twenty three, one seven five, five rise way marking. I had a very quick conversation with Chris, who's, who gave it, which I'll pick up on. There was a map related with the agenda, which is the movement of the brand signs around Bingley, um, the direct vehicle, effectively the car park, the main street and off the bypass. I don't know if anyone's got any queries on that. Uh, we're actually going to have that we do contribute the cost of the new signs, the eight hundred and fifty pounds. Um, there is money in the generation to the budget.
They want that from us, I think they want, they want us to contribute that.
Contribute.
Contribute towards that.
No, contribute that.
To ours, no. For the full cost, isn't it?
The full cost is that. They, they, they bring this just, just to cover up the sign, have the bypass, sort of, down with the fans, considering traffic, which is more, you know, the common office slip road, you know? Take that with, what, I don't know if any people's got any comments or thoughts. See, it seems relatively straightforward, it's just a cost.
I mean, that for years we've been asking this to be sorted out, so I think it will be good that it's part of the process. May I speak?
At my discretion, so you're welcome.
This five rise way marking
Yeah.
was on the agenda, probably the first or the second ever being the town council meeting. How's it take five years to get through sign times?
I, as per the council, that was a good. Two thousand and sixteen, so.
Speak it out, please.
Getting things progressive takes time, unfortunately.
You should own the horse.
I, I did, I did offer about eighteen months ago to, to get out of square ground and get rid of two of these signs.
I'll second that, eighty fifty. I'd need a horse for progressive.
Okay, well, I, I will, I will have to update the risk and results for, for consequence, for the budgets, anyone, for the next year. I'll, I'll do that, well. Okay, so twenty two, twenty three, one seven six, Bradford Council, high road presentation, extended twenty mile matter. I think this, I think this, this just came to us in the meanwhile, this is all.
We, we've got, it's taking, uh, a special blouse today.
David, come here now.
How they're all here.
Ah, how would you argue on the colour?
Guys, we're looking at this one, spread it a little bit.
I have a goal to be on a horse.
So when, you're, when I was,
Well, I don't know, it's essentially, it seems to be, it is simply, it's,
All right, okay.
The addition since the suburban side roads rather than the main road, I don't know. It's a silly one, we thought.
Where? All right, oh, this, this is men, no? Yeah. All right, yeah.
The red is the existing twenty mile.
North York.
Is anything moving, does anyone, before we, before we open, does anybody have any comments?
Just get on with it. And go.
I'll second that, know what he said. I had a question. Um, when I met with the guy's name, who I can't remember from Bradford, uh, all those years ago.
Simon Devali.
Simon Devali, thank you very much, chair. Um, he mentioned, uh, an exaggerated marking of the twenty mile an hour zone, such as, uh, more red tarmac in and things like that, just to give people a visual view rather than just signage. The, 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 this just doesn't say anything about it, it just says it's going to be extended. So one would assume that you'd move the signage from the bottom end and move it further away. And that would be it. Um, so I don't know the extent of this plan because it's just not accompanied by any text. So I think that might be certain, I'd like to go back to Bradford and say, this is all very well, we agree with the street, but what else is happening? Yeah, I was just saying to councillor Barton here, I mean, I just wasn't aware that the centre of Bingley was a twenty mile an hour zone. I hadn't waved in my consciousness, I mean, although it was, because it's been there for years, so.
Oh, there are thirty zones, almost ten, just after they indicated it's only, there would be indicators of round roads or, or little places on that.
So, so can you understand that if, if something like this goes forward, there have to be speed limiting measures on some of the roads to ensure the average speed not support much above twenty miles an hour? So whether that means all the blue roads would end up with humps on them or something like that?
We could afford that, yeah.
I don't, I don't know. So, so what we're saying is we would, we would like more context from Bradford with what, what they're proposing.
Yeah, yeah, more detail. You mentioned money and perhaps they would want to, we would need to contribute or they would ask for contribution. So my question would be, for what? Because, you know, if you're going to put a few signs up, then that's fine, but, you know, if, if you're extending something, well, I don't know, all, all the roads around Bailey Hills there would presumably need more than one sign, but there's not that many more signs, is there, in terms of?
Well, I don't know, there is a legal distance before you're putting on a sign where it's not twenty mile an hour, because otherwise it becomes thirty mile an hour. So more, more, more detail on?
More to it, more to it.
This is just an initial thing to see if options are in favour of.
Yeah, does anyone think there's any major issues, or? No, okay, no too.
No problem.
We're going through one seven seven, town clerk's report attached, anybody got any comment?
No, Tim.
No, Tim.
Uh, talks about SIBs, doesn't it? Talks about an email from SIBs in the, because it's not in correspondence here, so I guess I've read it somewhere and it must be in that town clerk's box, about talking to Bradford about SIBs. So perhaps I can raise that, uh, later. Oh, no, that's a not SIBs, PV's, Bob to vote, eh?
Eh?
Uh, um, Sola cells, Sola panels. Talks about a consultant from Sola panels somewhere. And it's not, it's not on the correspondence here, so I'm assuming it's.
I have, yeah, because I've contacted.
Local architect, uh, yeah, yeah. So I'm deserving the right to talk about that, will we get to the budget, please? Because it's sensitive, been turned to the budget, so.
No, Tim.
Thank you.
Anything else to add on the question? Okay, okay. Can we refer to someone else on the phone? As one of the members said.
We're just receiving it, aren't we, while we're doing?
So we see, we've got, so we see, you're all in favour. Moving on to the first one, twenty two, twenty three, one seven eight, problems. So email from the resident, freedom of information, credit for public participation in meetings.
What, what did they actually want to know?
They, they wanted to know, um, if they could find out how many people have attended the meetings since the inception of the council, so I explained that it's on the minutes. It's on the minutes every, every month.
We can do that, to do with it, at, at, at the cost of going back for six years of minutes, but we record it, don't we not?
Yeah, that's what I said to him.
It's on the website.
Or did you point the resident to the website and say, go do it yourself?
I said that it's on the minutes, do you need me to give you all your information and you must find it?
Okay, you're good with that.
Yeah.
Good luck with that.
Okay, then the next one, the question for trade up to use the market square on the market base. It's something like email or a student flying backwards and forwards about this. I'm not sure, he came to open consensus view?
No.
Councillor, is that on?
Yeah, um, I think we've got to a recalcitrant of the bushed being there for a number of days with the plastic buckets and the mops and whatever else. Generally, looking at market square, quite untidy. If they are given a licence, I presume Bradford Council would have to licence them and they'll have to pay for that and there must be some prerequisite that they keep the place tidy and not create anything outside.
Well, that would be a tease, isn't it, David?
Well, we would hope so.
I mean, personally, I wouldn't want anything like that, I don't know.
Exactly.
Six top bourbon and clouds.
That's what we also to a recalcitrant, folk who have shops and businesses in the town and, you know, they rent the, you know, I would think that would affect a lot of people.
So I, I think from the correspondence we had, there was some, some leavages and some, yes, we should, we should encourage and encourage the markets where what we want to go back with, something in the middle? We give the next, so you might actually, don't tell me, I know, I think councillor Dawson said they're a market base, that's fine.
To, to my view, it's a market square, so it's a market square section we use for markets. Don't say it's our market square just on Saturdays, we've got markets on Friday. Why can't we have a market on a Tuesday? You know, it's, it's a market square, so we should use it.
It was Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, if not Wednesday, I don't know.
Yeah, it is, I'm just saying it's a market square, so just use it. I've got no objection to anyone using it as a market. Just to rekindle the discussion, you know?
It has to be done right in the morning, so they pay the,
Pay the dues.
Pay the dues. Uh, well, you know, last two or three times, you know, there's been all sorts of stuff, just like, struggling down for days, I don't know, and it looks rough. And then next year will turn up, and next year, we'll have to do it, do it correctly.
Go, go back to what I was saying about the fruit and veg man the other day. I mean, he's literally competing with little stood next to him and the Audi around the corner and the car and these thingies, you know? Don't think that then another few fruit and veg's stolen in Bingley that might be competing with. But until they like to us and say, do you mind not giving this guy a licence because he's ruining our business, or we can say, oh, that's a shame, you know, there, there's, where, where's, where's the harm? That's what I don't want to worry about.
I don't imagine in the middle of the winter, there's going to be many people using that particular facility, um, you know, on the long market there, to be honest. And, and the cafes, most of it, the cafes, at least around the lanes, who it are, um, forever seem to be full, but well patronised.
So is there a proposal like this?
Yes, there is a proposal, so yes.
Subjects of conditions.
Subject to, subject to normal work for conditions, yeah. I don't think we should put conditions on. But that would be my proposal, we just say that we have no problem.
Well, then my condition would be not having its left over line. It's, it's not equal, it is a market. It's not, leave it there for once.
Oh, no, no, it has to go, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if not.
Yeah.
So, so that was a proposal from councillor Williams, seconded by councillor Barton, following that. Against. Uh, so then we've got emails from muscular dysphety about changing prices, I think the public can't put that off enough. Email from Bradford Council about the revised registered interest form. Now, for those councils that haven't completely learned or, has everybody else? People should be grateful in front of him to fill in and return the costs, please.
Well, the, the signature thing is the, the, the paning signature, is it?
Yeah, they, they want a website, don't they?
Yes, they do, but we won't put that on the website, we'll adapt that to the website, but we'll keep the copy, that's got the signature.
Question is, uh, is I've done it, what do you want to do with it? Is it acceptable, meaning give it to your bank, uh, for you to scan it? Or do you want me to take it over, scan it and email it?
If you give it to, give it to me.
I think, I think the work on has to go back to Bradford. They've got the full signature to go back.
You can have it, then, done.
So, so if people can complete those and return to the, to the clerk, I said. E, email from residents concerned over street cleaning in Bingley Town Centre.
I spoke to Chris, who was the,
Environment wall.
No, yeah, but it's.
And bester.
Bingley and bester, isn't it?
Uh, about that. Uh, about that, uh, he said, I'll go down with a brush and shovel, it's always getting like that, so it's, as, as the email said, there's often glass there, he's tried cleaning it all. He's supposed to have a machine, has it, dust keeping and shit left, but his machine broke. But he is trying as if I'm, okay?
So, Chair, if you might mention that, could you just in the minutes note the fantastic work that the set Chris is doing in trying to keep the sector big and healthy? He's such an enthusiastic, um, person and he really enjoys what he's doing, he's really committed to it.
Yes, absolutely, a hundred per cent.
He's doing a great job, I think we should...
I'll say, I'll say, yes, yeah.
Chair, is, is the area complained about, uh, the bottom, the gillam down by opposite station, you know, the telephone boxes and...
No, it's, it's, it, it sounds like it's back at Midland in the...
Okay.
This specific one was back at, back at the Midland, right? We had complaints, we had complaints about the Foundry Hills, Foundry Hill.
Foundry Hill, yeah. I took a photograph the other day, the bins are out of place and they're littered all over the place, it's just that those, uh, company bins, corporate bins, they're, they're just ill placed and there's nowhere for them to go. There should be some sort of, um...
Compound.
Compound, little pool. All that, okay. Yeah.
Okay. So then, email from highways of Bradford, posed highway improvement, might be sixty to sixty five. I assume this is a day on the things we had eight months ago, and better put schools is, it's, it's what they're...
Really, sixty thousand pounds worth of improvements, eighty thousand spent by Bradford and the rest from the combined authority.
I think they've started.
They have started, yeah, they've started.
Can, can someone just outline why we've got this photograph on the map, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, because all you're looking at, all you're looking at is that tyre with all the rips there that's set there.
That's what I thought, yeah.
That I...
Okay, that's what I thought, that's what I thought it was, yeah.
So, so I think as much as anything, this is, this is for information, because we had this, but, but things to know are, I think, all the works that they had on Wagon Line on the...
So it's just on the... Originally they had some speed bumps on Wagon Lane, but they decided that they don't have it necessarily.
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know, we'll play on there. I think there are a few little, obviously, sods of concern, um, which the highways people are trying to work through with the, um, residents on particular little minor matters along the route and hoping that they will be resolved or they'll have to go through some thing in the process.
So very much we're looking for our information. So moving on, email from the green fraction, we need to spread for their thought. This, this one is not more light flights than were agreed of the planning information and do we want to join in any form of... Recorations or reporting them to the council? No.
We do, we did seem to be on the flight path noted.
Yes, I think, I think they changed the flight plan for last, last year, certainly I, I know all about something, all in, in the summer.
I think it's not, yeah.
Turn it on and down, I'm not buying that, you know, yeah.
So just, just noted there, okay. So email from West Yorkshire Combined Authority, the consultant, consultation with West Yorkshire, mass transit missions for 2014. I think we've got the comments, and we're just mounting.
What we can do, is it?
Not in, so then, the email from residents, positive feedback about the water pollution and the change in places.
There you are, Steve.
Twenty.
There, there, there you are, councillor, there you are, councillor, believe you've done something right. This is where it is, this is where it is.
We also had, we had a...
Councillor Barton suggesting it might have been from me, but he was from his wife, no, there was nothing to do, no...
So we've had a couple of correspondence come in since the agenda went out, there was one from our cleaning company, uh, they've been cleaning up, asking if we'd write a review for them, so we're quite happy to do that then, and we're pleased to deliver it, yeah.
We're going to say something nice down the project, yeah? Clean it.
Um, and there was one from YMCA asking for a request for photographs.
Of what?
Of, of...
Meetings or...
Meetings, the area.
Photos, have we got any photos of us?
There's plenty of stills on YouTube, they can...
I'm not, yeah, I'm not aware of any.
We're not, we're going to do with these, uh...
I think they'll just put them on their website and maybe...
Training.
I think we'll talk about training, I think we're more after this, this is our century, and this, that, the other...
Yeah, this is, this is the whole, and that kind of...
I'd be happy to step over there and take a photograph of you bunch. Councillors and officers, if you want one. Just a thought.
I could ask Debbie to have a look, see if we've got any that's in there.
We should actually go and ask them for the achievements.
Yeah.
Well, we're sure that we've used our promotional...
Most of it, yeah. Okay, so 22/23, 171, promotional items, responses, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, thank you for listening, please.
So, so do, do you want to start, we've had the shares here, just told me where I've taken the culture.
Yeah.
I'd love to promote your places, talk about...
I think we ought to be port or promote that we hope to be opening it soon, in the near future or something.
We have to be careful, yeah.
I know, but, you know, it's, it's largely complete and we're just dotting the i's and crossing the t's with the approvals. I think something like that would be good.
Just be a bit careful with the weather and that side, yeah.
Do you want to say anything about lego plant?
Um, hmm, no, I don't think there's anything we want to promote, that we've, uh, we've asked people for comments, uh, that the people concerned about it, so...
Okay, then I think that's, that's probably it, promotional items.
That's the one, yeah. I think we're always promoting the leading playing final, but do you want to put that on?
Yeah, I think so. Have we got a date?
Four twenty, January, Saturday, ten to twelve.
Yeah, question for my mum, so, always.
Do we want to say anything about the tra- traffic changes, just to pose by the council? We noted it.
Maybe we'll hope they say, yeah.
I don't know what, what would you say, I mean, they, they, these ones, they're hanging, so... And I don't know what, what we want to do about the twenty mile an hour zone, before we've got some more information about what might, what might be going through. So, I think if you say you're looking at it, everybody's going to tell us their stretch in twenty mile an hour.
Yeah.
So, that is it for promotional items, then. 22/23, 118, date for the next meeting, so the next full council meeting is Tuesday, the seventeenth of January, six thirty, that's it, and that will be the meeting where we need to sign off the budget.
Got to let town...
There you go.
Got to let town, I don't know.
I know, I know, it's a draft, yeah, just going to whip your own, aren't we?
I think that's smaller, really.
Yeah, 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 institute, yeah.
Yeah.
So, 22/23, 181, exclusion of depressing public, well, public, yeah.
Of course.
That's it.
Just stop the...